Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and call the Elk Grove Township Public Hearing on the tentative budgets for the Road District to order and ask the clerk to call the roll.
Trustee Saturn?
Present.
Trustee Nierdowski?
Present.
Trustee Garfia?
Present.
Trustee Keenly?
Present.
Supervisor Sweeney?
Present. Okay. Item three, hearing regarding the Elk Grove Township Road District tentative budget and appropriation ordinances. Any public comment? Seeing none, are there any comments from the board? Okay, hearing none. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
Moved by trustee Nierdowski, is there a second?
Oh my goodness.
Second.
Seconded by trustee Saturn. I just heard them both, so.
[laughing]
Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We'll take a brief recess before we start the regularly scheduled board meeting. Thank you. I'm gonna go ahead and call the regular Elk Grove Township Board of Trustees meeting to order for February 24th, 2020, and ask everyone to please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And I'd like to ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Trustee Saturn?
Present.
Trustee Nierdowski?
Present.
Trustee Garfia?
Present.
Trustee Keenly?
Present.
And supervisor Sweeney?
Present. Okay. On the, can, any questions about any items on the consent agenda? Would any board members like any items removed from the consent agenda?
Bye.
Oh, I'm sorry, public comment, I apologize.
When are the 2020 first installment property taxes due?
If you'd like a chance to answer that, go ahead Connie.
First installment's due and payable March 1st. Okay, 'cause the paper bills that were sent via mail have a different due date than the electronic version. It's the third, and you will go by that date. The third is the one, because I believe the first was a weekend, so they extended it to the third. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Seeing none. All right, now down to the consent agenda. Any items that the board would like removed from the consent agenda? Okay. Seeing none, can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Moved by trustee Saturn, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by trustee Garfia. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Trustee Saturn?
Aye.
Trustee Nierdowski?
Aye.
Trustee Garfia?
Aye.
Trustee Keenly?
Aye.
Supervisor Sweeney?
Aye. Hey, motion carries. Item E, discussion of potential action on the approval of minutes. You have minutes from the January 20th, 2020, regular board meeting. Any questions or suggested changes to those minutes?
No.
Hearing none, can I have a motion to approve those minutes?
Don't move.
Moved by trustee Keenly?
Second.
Seconded by trustee Saturn. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, no presentations, reports from elected officials. First up is our Cessar Connie Caricelli.
You've received my written report. The only thing that has come to bear since that report was written is that the county now is no longer doing a 30-day window for appeals. It is now a 40-day window for appeals. That's number one. Number two, they have a tentative schedule for when we will be open for appeals with the county. We were open last year in April, this year it's May. However, they've already juxtaposed a few positions already, so that is still really only tentative. We won't know until we get closer down the line.
Okay. Any questions for Connie? Okay. Thank you Connie. Clerk's report, George.
I submitted a written report.
Any questions for George? Okay. Highway Commissioner's report, Art.
I'd like to add that on Friday, the Village of Elk Grove gave us a final inspection on our highway project, and they passed us with the stormwater permit, so that's closed with them.
Any questions for Art? Okay. Supervisors' report, just a quick update, since we took a tour of the new property at 600 Landmeyer in Elk Grove Village. Last Thursday, late afternoon, we finally got word that we received a final sign-off on the permit for the sprinkler system at 600 Landmeyer. And sprinkler work to finish the rest of the system was scheduled for today and tomorrow. Assuming that goes to plan, which we expect, a test for the sprinkler system will occur Wednesday and Thursday. It's a 48-hour test with the lines under pressure, charged and under pressure. Assuming that goes well, we have our final, we have our above-grid inspection scheduled for Friday. If all of those things line up and we get our above-grid inspection things, we're kind of on the downslide at that point, three, three-and-a-half weeks or so from getting that, then the ceiling grids can, the ceiling tiles can get dropped in, the floor can be finished, things can get buttoned up, final inspections can be scheduled, furniture can come in, and we can move in. So we're tentatively looking by the end of the week of the 16th, March 16th, but I'm cautiously optimistic, so we'll have to see what happens with the sprinkler system this week, so. That's really the latest update as far as the building goes. It's been, we've been dealing with issues related to the sprinkler system and the AV system for a while. It's put us back about seven weeks, so.
So once we're in and settled, we'll wait till that time to decide on a day for like an open house for the community?
Yeah, I mean, if we have a board, we do have to, this is another thing I had to bring up in my notes here. We have to, assuming, assuming the tentative, the town fund, the tentative budget passes tonight, it's gotta lay on the table for 30 days. That kick, that's gonna have to kick out our March meeting till the 20, to the 30th? Is it the 30th that Monday? So we're gonna have to kick that out to the 30th. We'll have to schedule an open house, but I'm hoping at least something for the elected officials and the staff members can be held just to kind of commemorate the move into the new building that night. And then we'll schedule, hopefully that following week or 10, within the couple of weeks after we, that meeting, we'll be able to have an open house for the public and our partner agencies, those kind of things. Okay. Any questions for me? All right. Okay. Can I have a motion to approve the elected official reports as presented?
So move.
Moved by trustee Nierdowski, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by trustee Saturn. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, no correspondence, under old business, item one is the budget updates revisions for fiscal year 2020-2021. Erica, do you want to review those, or do you want me to review them?
I don't really care.
Okay, that's fine. Because it's, this feeds into, so on your updated worksheet, you see the highlighted, we can go through the highlights on the town fund. And if you have any questions, let me know. So if we go through the highlighted numbers, there was an adjustment to 190,000 under personal property replacement tax for revenues. Let me see here. The Cook County Vehicle stickers, proposed budget revenue, that was zeroed out. Under expenses, under passport services, that number was changed to 3,000. Under contractual services, the job counselor was changed from 10,000 to 11,000. Professional services was changed to $100,000. And engineering services was changed to 25,000. Both those line items, the 100,000 and the 25,000, we don't know exactly what to estimate. We know what general costs are for removal, but just in case there's any issues with the gasoline tanks being removed from the back of the 600 Landmeyer property, we're taking precautions in the budget just to make sure the funds are there. And then the lighting, let me see here, the lightning detection system, changing that to 3,000 there. Under capital, outlay, youth services, challenge course. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, the land, yeah, I'm sorry. So the Landmeyer building, permanent improvements, that was changed to 250,000. That we anticipate using for building the bike safety course, again, depending on how the course is laid out, we'll determine the expense there, we'll, the board will be able to scale up and/or down depending on how it chooses to create the layout there. And then the youth services challenge course of 50,000. Just kind of give you an idea, the thought is that those, removing the gasoline tanks, the challenge course, and the bike safety building that, these numbers are in the specific line items, but we anticipate that all going into one project. We'd have to remove the tanks, build the challenge course, build the bike safety, and pave over, repave that property, the back lot of that property. So all of that would be included in one project, at least that's how I would anticipate it. Let me see here. Under social services, if you look, there's specific green highlights for a variety of reasons. The Maryville Academy withdrew the application, community, let me see, hold on, that's Shelter, did not submit a request. Ph.D. Women's Counseling is no longer operating. Connections of Illinois did not submit a request. The daycare voucher program, in the note it says no longer operating, but that's, that was the daycare center, not the voucher program. Let me see here, Countryside zeroed out because it's no longer operating. Lutheran Social Services did not submit a request. Search was, it was in red because it was 10 days late. Gigi's Playhouse did not submit a request. And then if you look, the last six entries there are new agencies that have requested funds. They're not highlighted, but that's why they don't have any history going across the board. The senior bus, the new bus was changed to $100,000 to anticipate a new bus and potentially a used bus as well. And that is, those are the changes under town fund. The tentative sewer fund, under maintenance and capital expenses, that number was changed to 250,000. And those.
Why was that just just?
That just matches up to the scope of work that Mark Toll was recommending. Our engineer. Any questions about those changes?
Where is the voucher system? Where is the money for the vouchers?
So, under social services?
Yeah.
Do you see it? Did that answer your questions, or?
Am I missing it? I must be missing it, hang on.
Do you have an, it's listed under Connections of Illinois?
Okay. Do you see it on yours, Dick? Did not submit a request.
That, that's for Connections of Illinois did not submit a request. And then that note below it that says no longer operating was an incorrect note because we didn't fund the Elk Grove Daycare Center, we funded a daycare voucher program.
So then the vouchers are in the budget?
Yeah, I carried that forward, so we probably have to discuss that.
Is there, is there a section where it's at?
He's looking for the line item.
Yeah, it's under social services. Can you pass that down and see it, maybe you don't have an updated one? Oh. Yeah, you don't, I'm sorry, you don't have an updated one. Sorry.
Thank you.
I don't have an updated one either.
You don't?
No.
All right, so just, so if you can write this in, so.
Oh, no, there isn't, there isn't an updated one. It was on a separate page.
You have an updated one?
Yes.
Do you have an updated one, Dick? Dale, Sue Ellen?
I don't see it.
It was, it was on a separate page, it wasn't stapled to the other ones.
Can you show me what it looks like?
It's mine, mine.
It was not stapled to the other one, it was on a separate page.
Mine too.
I just have general assistance.
Can I see?
This is all I have.
There it is, right there.
Okay.
Okay.
Why do you have those green things? Oh, there it is. Thank you so much for asking that question. Yeah, we're all good.
You're all good now?
We're good, we got it.
Yeah, there's a separate one, sorry for the computer, that's why, that's why Erica and Paul were running late, and I was running late, because I, I made them change a couple of things, that was one of them. So, that was my mistake for the confusion, we actually gave you, I think, yeah, either way, you have the new ones now, so.
The increase, the red is a, is a decrease, or what do you? What is the color code?
The green, the green for the daycare center, or not the daycare center, the daycare vouchers shouldn't have been in green, but that's, that's either way. So the green highlights the ones that didn't, did not submit a request or withdrew the application. The red just signifies a agency that came in late on their request, past the deadline. So we can talk about what we do with the voucher program. I anticipate that being part of our discussion, but I'm glad at least we, everyone has the page that's showing that. So any questions about the changes, and then we'll go into actually discussing the tentative budget. Everybody good? Okay?
Yep.
All right, so you have the worksheets, and then you have the actual appropriation ordinance for town fund. I will go through that. When we get to the social service agencies, that'll probably take most of the discussion, I'm anticipating tonight. Everything else, we discussed last month, but obviously we can discuss and revisit any, any section the board would like. But I'll start at the top and just go ahead and stop me, I'll, at any section you want to discuss further. Estimated receipts totaling $2,499,971. Expenditures, starting with administration, $51,500. Contractual services totaling $494,000. Commodities and miscellaneous is $27,500. Capital outlay totaling $370,000. Payroll expenses for administration, $716,247. Assessors division, $214,631. Social services, that, if we can come back to that, we can work off the worksheet, because this doesn't show all of them, just put the bottom-line number there until the board decides what they want to do. Bike safety, bottom-line figure is 54,000. Senior services is 168,000. Adult and family counseling and youth services, youth and family services total is 370,000. Total town fund expenditures, $349,378. General assistance, estimated receipts, $466,714. Contractual services, $20,750. Administration expenses, $29,200. Employee benefits, $306,000. Home relief is $267,000. Program expenses, $14,500. Total general assistance expenditures, $637,450. Sewer fund, estimated receipts, $101,250. Contractual services, $59,200. Administration expenses, $33,650. And capital expenses, $250,000, for a total appropriations of $312,850. Any questions about the budget and appropriation ordinance before we dig into the social service agencies?
Yeah, Mike, could you just?
Yep.
The total expenditures again for the town fund?
For the town fund?
Yeah. Because that's some of my, what my document reads.
Hold on one second, hold on, hold on, hold on. This is one that I think kicked a different number back. Is it $3279,378? Sorry, that was, um. Yeah, I had Erica change something in social services to identify that 230,000 for the daycare vouchers, and that should have changed the bottom-line number. So I apologize, the bottom-line total appropriations for town fund is $3279,378. Thank you, Dick. Okay, any questions before we discuss social service agencies? All right. Did I have a updated, did you give me an updated appropriation ordinance? Thank you very much. Okay. So for the total social service, total social services, you see at least what we plugged in on the appropriation ordinance as a placeholder was $813,500. What that includes, if you look through what we just went through on the worksheet, it includes the agencies, what they received, or what they. Is that what they requested? I think I've gotten myself confused. That's what they requested, correct? That 813,500, right? That's what they requested? Right. So that, so that 813,500 includes what all the agencies requested? And that includes, that takes out the agencies that didn't submit or no long, withdrew applications, and then adding, and then with the daycare vouchers in there. So you see increases in, you can, you can see the different changes across the different line items. And then again, Maryville Academy withdrew an application, Shelter did not submit, Ph.D. Women's Counseling, did, no longer operating, Connections of Illinois did not submit a request. Countryside no longer operating. Let me see, Lutheran Social Services did not submit a request. Search was 10 days late. Gigi's Playhouse did not submit a request. And then Arts Refreshing the Soul is a new agency, requested 1,000. Cleanup Give Back requested 7,500, that's a new agency. Earth Paint is a new agency, requested 22,000. Fellowship Housing Corp. is a new agency, requested 5,000. And the League of Women Voters, I'm sorry, Hopeful Beginnings requested 5,000, is a new agency. League of Women Voters, a new agency that requested $3,000.
Do we know why Shelter or Lutheran Social Services didn't request?
I do not.
Okay.
Because that's a, for Lutheran Social Services, that's a huge number they're giving up.
Yes, it is. Any discussion about what the board members would like to do?
Do we know why Journeys the Road House was late?
Search, you mean?
I'm sorry, I think they're wrong with Search.
Um, I, I would, Paul, can you, what was their reason?
The, I got an email from the person I think that answered the rants, that both her and the CEO were, and she said, nobody caught it, nobody brought it up. The applications were sent out at the end of December, they were due February 5th, I think it was like six weeks to get in their information. And they said that it took almost two weeks, or ten days.
Are we gonna schedule a meeting to have the new agencies come talk to us, and maybe some of the other ones?
So I was gonna talk to the board, I could have covered that under my report, but it was just more informal. Paul heard back from George, myself, and trustee Saturn as far as three meeting dates that he sent out, the 4th, the 9th, and the 11th of March, to have a special meeting for the, at least the new agencies, and then any additional agency that we've funded in the past that the board would like to hear from. But initially Sue Ellen requested that we at least hear from the new ones, which is, you know, always common practice. It's probably a good thing to do, at least to hear from them. If the board would like to hear from any additional ones, we can absolutely do that. But I was hoping to have the meeting sooner than later on the 4th, if everyone is okay with that.
I think George couldn't come that day.
I thought the 4th George was good with, yes?
Yeah, good with the 4th.
Okay, sorry.
The 9th were good, I thought, yeah.
Dale?
I'm good with it.
4th is good for you.
4th is fine with me.
All right, so we'll have a meeting on, at the 4th.
4th is fine.
What's the earliest everyone can start?
Probably 5 o'clock.
I was gonna say 6.
5:30, 6?
6, 6 would be better.
6?
Yeah.
Okay. So that puts us, if we, I mean, it puts us about two and a half hours, which 6 is, this is fine, puts about 8:30. Are there any agencies that the board would like to hear from that we already fund? All right, then we'll schedule, we'll schedule those six? That'd be great, thank you.
15 minutes each other guessing.
Right. Okay. All right. So let's start with those six. Do we want to zero those numbers out until we hear from them, or do we want to put in the placeholder of what they requested until we hear from them? What are the thoughts on that?
If we, if we, if the budget gets passed with that, we don't have to spend it.
We don't have to spend it, no.
That's true, yeah.
We, we still have, we still have the final budget hearing for the, for the town fund as well, next month.
So leave it as a place set holding?
So we'll leave those numbers of what they requested.
I think that's okay.
Okay? All right, so, all right. Now going back to the other agencies. Thoughts on any of them before I share mine?
If Search in, has a new administration, would we want them to come in, just to meet us?
I, I think that's reasonable.
What do you think?
I think so.
It's a good idea.
All right, can we add Search to that list for the fourth? Add Search to the list for the meeting on the fourth since they have a new administration? Thank you, sure. Okay, you want to leave the three thousand as a placeholder for them as well? Okay?
Yeah.
I think so, too.
All right.
I thought we weren't taking late applications.
What's that?
I thought we weren't taking late applications anymore, so it's an exception because they have new administration? I'm just asking.
No, no, me, me, I, I, I don't, I agree, I don't think we should ta- I don't think we should give them funds, but that's how I'm, that's gonna be...
I thought, I thought that we were supposed to, and, and maybe I had, had a small seizure, but I thought we were supposed to have some type of policy, written policy on that.
We, we kept going around and around on that, the board never voted on having a policy.
We didn't do a policy, I mean, everyone kind of agreed on it, but we didn't do a policy.
And we didn't want a policy because the, the idea was at the time, that my recollection was that there's, we set a policy by creating deadlines.
Okay.
If you have a deadl- if you have a deadline in the grant application, that's what it is.
Zero them out?
I'm just asking.
I'm, I'm with you, Sue Ellen, no, I, I agree, we have to, I mean, everyone has to do, yes, we did discuss that, we haven't formalized a policy other than setting a deadline in the grant application. I'm just, look, I know how I feel about these, the late applications, no applications, um, but Trustee and Graffia requested talking to them?
No, no, I will, I will rescind that request.
Does anybody else want to talk to Search? Okay, we'll pull them off that list. All right, everybody okay with zeroing them out? All right. Okay. All right, let's just go one by one, all right. Maryville Academy, they withdrew on their own, everyone okay with not giving them money?
Yes.
Okay. Shelter did not submit a request. Is the board comfortable with leaving that number at zero?
Yeah.
Okay? Ph.D. Women's Counseling is no longer operating. Assume we'll put that at zero, Connections of Illinois saying, uh, did not submit a request. So everyone, is the board comfortable with putting, leaving that at zero?
Yes.
Okay? The daycare voucher, if you wouldn't mind us coming back to, uh, Countryside, uh, no longer operating. Lutheran Social Services did not submit a request, is everyone, is the board comfortable leaving that at zero?
Yes.
Okay? Let me see, Journey Care, I'm sorry, Gigi's Playhouse, um, did not submit a request, is the board comfortable with leaving that at zero dollars?
Yes.
Okay? All right. Let me see, um... Now, the other ones, we'll go, we'll go back to the voucher program, but, um, what are the thoughts on the increases of the agencies that were remaining?
I thought, um, in the past, we talked about that our Director of Social Services would provide some oversight in terms of who she used or didn't use, or who she felt was valuable or wasn't valuable.
All I can tell, I can work on that, I didn't, um, I don't have that, um, I haven't done that. I can do that.
I mean, it's sort of hard to be able to say, well, we're gonna give them an increase or give them a decrease without having any information behind why or what or...
Okay. There, there's several of these, I mean, they're, they're all possible referrals, I can find out how often Social Services refers, um, to them, might be more difficult because they, they, they take direct, uh, they have direct intake as well. So it's not just a matter of us referring out, they have direct intake.
No, I understand, but she might have some opinion also, in terms of the value of the organizations to residents of our community.
I can discuss with her and report back, I'm happy to do that.
And also, you know, in terms of her thoughts, in terms of, yeah, should they get more or not? I mean, we don't have to follow her advice, but I would think she's our resident expert in this area.
Okay. In the meantime, any thoughts on leaving the numbers the same as opposed to increasing them? Some of these were substantial increases, a couple of these, it's quite odd that they requested money but haven't invoiced us for the current fiscal year, which is a little bit strange, but...
Where does it show where they, oh, this is the percent they've gotten so far this year of their money?
Correct.
Okay. Yes, seventeen of them asked for more money than last year. So, the, the end of their grant money for this fiscal year would be?
End of March.
March, okay.
March thirty-one, yep.
Would, um, she be able to, um, uh, talk to the board at that, before, after the, um, of the fourth, on the fourth, before those meetings, or how would you want to do that?
I don't, doing it this year, I don't think is realistic, we're dealing with the move, and I, I got so much on my plate dealing with the move, I can do my best, but...
I'm sorry, but is, she's the one that would be the one talking to us though, wouldn't she?
Yeah, but she's, she's not gonna, until I have a chance to meet with her and discuss these things, she's not gonna come to a board meeting.
Okay. I just, I just find it very hard to make a deci- I mean, this might, board may not, but, very hard to make a decision on increases when we don't know if they're of any, if those increases are warranted, or if the organization is of value or of limited value...
Sure.
To the township, and, um, otherwise, we're just...
Well, what you're, what you're, well, what you're saying, I think, has a lot of merit, and, and that's the place I eventually want to get to, to where we have kind of a checklist for these agencies, what's the value, how are we monitoring that? We've talked about this over the years, um, we want to get to that point. But, just for the record, we, the board has been funding these agencies not just, for, for years and years and years, not that that's the, the reason we should be funding them, or just because we have done it, we continue to fund them. But, you know, I, I just haven't... I don't remember that direct ask from the board to have the Director of Social Services go through and do that, normally, that's been a discussions the board has had.
I think what it was, is there was a discussion saying that we were going to, prior to this year, we were going to change the whole process, and we were gonna come up with a, uh, a process for, a process for doing this. And, uh, obviously, we haven't, so, I'm, all I'm saying is, all I'm saying is that we have not, we did not do what we said we were gonna do, um, for whatever reason, and maybe it's partially the move. But, I, I just, I still think there has to be some, some knowledge behind making decisions on spending the taxpayers' money.
I, I absolutely agree. Please. Yeah, I mean, I guess what George is talking about is more, you know, uh, more direct input, more third-party verification of how they're serving the township, which I can understand. And I want to get to that point, like I said, with, with, you know, whether that was a directive from the board, I, I just don't recall it. I have been focused on the move, not that that's an excuse, but I can compile that information, how quickly I'll be able to do that, um, is a, is another story. Go ahead, Trustee Saturn?
Well, I was gonna say, maybe if we had some of that info, we could go over some of it on March fourth, but why are they not asking for the money we granted them last year?
I don't know, why they're not invoicing us, I don't know, that's...
Is that typical?
Some of them, yes, some of them, no, Erica could probably tell you more, it's, it's hit or miss with some of these.
Some of them will bill me quarterly, some of them will bill me half a year, so the smaller ones are hit or miss as far as the invoicing, but the bigger ones, um, invoice me on a monthly basis, and...
But a lot of them are less than fifty percent, and it's always more.
Some of them are zero.
Even like Kenneth Young.
So, I mean, maybe we need to take that into consideration when we decide what we're giving them for next year.
I, I agree with that too, absolutely.
If they're not asking for the money?
Yeah, it's, it's been, this board is, is, has talked about that, I think it's a good thing that we're having these conversations, for whatever reason, other pressing priorities, we haven't, we haven't been able to tackle it thus far, doesn't mean, um, that we can't dig in a little bit more, um, and, and have conversations about, um, how to repriorities, reprioritize these funds, I, I think it's a great discussion to have. What I'm saying is, I haven't dug further into, um, looking at how I would set the priorities or, or what my checklist would be when I'm deciding on the, the number that I would feel comfortable with.
Just one question, on mobile dental, it says zero percent, but we give them...
Mobile dental clinic, let me see, where were they?
Because when we, uh, audit the bills, we approve those.
They're at ninety-two percent.
Is it, the zero is a change in budget?
That's a change in budget.
Oh, the change, okay, thank you.
Yeah, they, they've already requested almost thirty-seven thousand out of the forty thousand.
Okay.
Yeah. No, they're usually very good, right, Erica? The mobile dental clinics usually write on you, monthly, yeah. No, but I think, like, you, you look at certain ones that haven't requested any of their funds, haven't invoiced us for anything, no, I think that's a very valid, um, kind of punchless item, to say, okay, are, are these folks, do they truly need this money? Or are they asking out of, um, asking because that, they, they've done that from time to time, and they don't really use the money or need the money? Those are all valid questions. For those, is the board comfortable with leaving the same numbers as last year? I will get the, I'll get the information as quickly as I can, I, I can have Lisa report, um, as, as, as soon as she can, I just have to sit down and talk to her and try to get my hands around the metrics that she might use or discuss to try to identify the benefits of some of these agencies so that she can convey that to the board.
Could we leave the number in the budget right now as the amount requested, and then, um, go over some of these individual ones on the fourth, maybe spend a half hour or so?
That's, I don't have, I don't have a problem with that, I mean, we can always, yeah, like, like Bob, Trustee and Graffia said, we can, we don't have to, that's, we don't have to spend the entire amount that we, we budget for, and this is just a tentative budget for tonight, so... Would the board like to, is the board comfortable with that until we discuss on the fourth, March fourth?
Yes.
Leaving the proposed number, the requested dollar amount?
Yes.
Okay? Okay, all right, so the last item here, the daycare voucher program. I kind of just tell you, we, um, probably about six months ago, um, I think at this point, I, I think it's, it's okay to, um, discuss this conversation. Annette from the daycare center, uh, she kind of, she said that they were, there were some issues with, um, from a couple different spots in the building, uh, some lead testing, um, that were slightly high, it's gonna take some remediation, the daycare center, um, was gonna try to figure that out, or wasn't sure what was gonna happen. But I guess at some point, the Elk Grove Park District decided either not to renew the lease, or I, I got, what I'm saying, I don't know really what happened, after my conversation with Annette, she was telling me, they were figuring things out, and that's the last time I talked to Annette. Um, and then, I didn't hear anything else until it hit the papers that the daycare center was closed down in, in December or January. We were invoiced through November, or did we get a invoice through December? I think we got an invoice through December, right? I can check on that, I think we got a December invoice, I'm not gonna hold you to that, I know you don't have that in front of you, Erica, but, I believe we got invoiced in December, so I think that was the last month they might have been operating. So I was expecting to hear more, um, again, I, I invited Annette to have a conversation with me about coming to work for the township if something were to happen to the daycare center, to transition those families. Her thought was to consider that offer, um, but then again, I just hadn't heard anything. That being the case, instead of trying to, and I have, we haven't heard from any of those families either, um, asking for funds or anything like that, it's just been poof, we haven't heard from anybody. What's that? It was November, okay, so we didn't get one in December, so, um... So, instead of trying to, this is my thought, just for one fiscal year, is to take those funds and apply them to building the bike safety course. And then reinstituting those funds, and then developing the voucher program more in depth, we're gonna have to start from scratch, um, and maybe we can still bring in Annette and see if she'd be willing to help us or somebody else. Get a true voucher program, uh, off the ground, starting from scratch. Like I said, I anticipated that voucher program with the Elk Grove Daycare Center to cycle out after three or four years, and it just didn't happen that way. So, that would be my recommendation, is at least leave the line item in there, zero it out, we could use those funds for one year to bu- build the bike safety course, use those funds to develop that, the challenge course, still going to a good cause, um, and then we can re, since that would be a one-time expense, we can reinstitute the voucher program funds in the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two fiscal year.
So you'd leave the voucher program unfunded for this, this budget year, and then you would refund it the next year?
That would be my recommendation, and this year, um, those funds would go to use on the capital expenses of the bike safety and challenge course, um, and we can develop a voucher program to start for one of twenty-twenty-one. Thoughts?
You would use this year to, um, would you bring somebody on to develop that program, or how, I mean, so that we don't run into, you don't get into the next fiscal year and you, we haven't done anything?
I have, before I, I can't go any further until the board tells me what they want to do, and, and I'll prioritize based on that. If we want to start the voucher program right away, then I would initiate probably a conversation with Annette. If we can work with her, great, maybe she can recommend somebody else, um, to get that off the ground more immediately, if, if not, that gives us a little bit more time over the next fiscal year. And I would anticipate if we went that route, once we could get the bike safety and challenge course under contract, that would give me an opportunity, once we went through that bid process, is to then start working on the voucher program. We could do it simultaneously, I just know that these things take time and attention away, right? We can only, there's only so much we can focus on, but I'm happy to have a conversation with Annette right away either way. Just think this is a good opportunity to use these funds in this fiscal year and be able to renew those funds, uh, replenish those funds, um, in the next fiscal year. Because, I mean, if I started a voucher, voucher program anyway now, it's, it's gonna take some time to advertise and work out, um, get a handle on all the regulations, making sure it's implemented prop- properly anyway, so...
So I guess the, the question that I had though is, are you gonna use this current year not to run the program, but to develop it?
Yes, that would be my, that's what, that's, that's, that's what I would expect, yes.
And you, so if you're gonna, so we would bring somebody on to develop it?
Potentially.
And they would run?
Poten- potentially somebody, potentially not, um...
So where would we get the families, would they reach out to the ones who've been at Elk Grove Township daycare or just...
That would be something, yeah, that, there's a lot of unanswered questions, I don't know, like I said, it went, I thought, I, I thought at some point, there would be a transition phase, that did not happen. I can't speak to the specifics of what happened, but those families have not come, but yeah, we, we could reach out to those families, we could, uh, reach out to a variety of agencies, on the north end of the township as well, and start to identify, um, our requirements for the program, who would accept the vouchers, how we got invoiced for those vouchers, how we identify the families, that's what I would anticipate doing over the next year.
Would that be under general assistance?
Well, it would be under, I mean, it's under the town fund now, um, there's a variety of ways to go about it, we could use the social services, uh, division to identify people, um, and their outreach programs... We could use the social services, uh, division to identify people, um, in their outreach programs, and also with the people that they see, um, but that doesn't, that doesn't mean it has to move into that department. It could stay there, the funds could be there, and then they could just use that as a referral, essentially to town, those funds for, as a referral source.
Well, without some type of a specific program in place, it would seem to be prudent to utilize that money for some needs that we have now, and then reinstitute the program with, uh, a plan in place for next year.
Especially because we've had a lot of costs we didn't expect at the new building.
We have.
I would just suggest the board, if you want a plan in place next year, somebody's gonna have to develop that.
Right.
You're gonna have to have some, either, either the existing staff, or you're gonna have to put in your budget money to, to bring somebody on to do it.
Absolutely. This is true. Is the board comfortable with leaving that line item, uh, in the budget, but zeroing it out for this year, anticipating increasing that next year?
Well, I was thinking that's, just that's quick. I mean, I, honestly, I, I realize that, what the discussion's about, but, but there's no, no building.
Right? Okay, so...
No, I understand that keeping the funds there, and then that's a whole different matter, but I, but there's no, there's no building.
The idea was to allow people to go wherever they wanted to.
Right, right.
Uh, the building was turned over to the park district, and they were actually running the program, I think, weren't they?
No, so they were, they had the same, the Elk Grove Park District had the same arrangement that we had with the Elk Grove Township Daycare Center, is, their, Elk Grove Township Daycare Center was an independent nonprofit agency. It had nothing to do with us, other than receiving funding and utilizing our, our building. At the time, they had the same arrangement with the Elk Grove Park District, is they leased space from the Elk Grove Park District.
So, even though it was called the Township Daycare, it wasn't part of us?
It wasn't, but it's not part, it was not part of us, right?
So, but all the, all the recipients of the, of the, the vouchers-
Right.
Were all physically in that building?
So, what the board had decided at the time was, I think it was a, it was a compromise, I think it was a good compromise, was to take those funds, and at the daycare center, the Elk Grove Township Agency Daycare Center, they age out at twelve years old. So, as, we, like I said, we were anticipating this agency to operate, you know, we don't know how long, but for the foreseeable future. As children aged out, we would take the funds that were applied to them, and then that would go into essentially a voucher pool for new, for new families to use. But that was part of the transition, saying instead of leaving these families that were relying on the money, um, through the, through the specific daycare, instead of leaving them high and dry, say, okay, we'll cycle this through, and then over time, we'll free up funds that new families could use. And that was kind of the trade-off between saying, okay, we're just gonna take, we're all gonna start fresh, and start interviewing new families, and trying to decide how this money's spent. What we're gonna say is, okay, we'll transition the current families out, and, um, that kind of fell apart when their lease didn't get renewed, or whatever happened. So, now we're, you know, we didn't have that time to transition, and slowly pull that money out, and, um, but the idea was, over time, right, practi- theoretically, it was a voucher program. For practical purposes, it was still an agency grant, right? For, cause they were billing us for all their families, and we hadn't had a child age out yet. There were some that were getting close, but, you know, they just, we'd had, we didn't cycle enough time through, to start pulling those funds, but that was what we were anticipating over time.
What, do we need to do anything insofar as transferring these funds out to a different line item? If you want to use it for bicycle safety?
No, I mean, cause, no, it's not a capital fund, so we, we would just, it would just be general appropriation, you would just,
Okay.
Cause the money, the money for the, we've already identified money in the budget for the bike safety. What I'm saying is, is, you know, you, you have access to more funds, just, you could point to saying, okay, we've saved two-hundred-and-thirty thousand dollars over here. You're applying it over there, but you're not showing that on, on the budget, that, that specific move. Is the board comfortable with that?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so let me recap. All right, let's just go through these agencies. I'll recap. If you have any questions, stop me. For the first four, Glenkirk Salvation Army, Resources for Community Living, A Caring Place, those agencies requested funds again. Um, until we discuss, um, these agencies in, in more depth on March fourth, we will, uh, leave the proposed, uh, the requested amount in there. Maryville Academy is, uh, reduced to zero. Alexian Brothers Foundation, same, leaving in the requested amount of thirty-two thousand. Shelter, zero. Community Connections, ten. Northwest Suburban Daycare, ten. Ph.D. Women's Counseling, zero. Catholic Charities, eight thousand. Escortive Transportation Services, four thousand. Access to Care, thirty-three thousand. Connections of Illinois, no longer oper- or did not submit a request, zero. Daycare Voucher Program, zero. Clearbrook, uh, five, I crossed that over there, what's, uh, thirty thousand, sorry? Uh, Countryside, no longer operating, zero. Faith Community Homes, ten thousand, five. Children's Advocacy, eighty-five hundred. Mobile Dental Clinic, forty thousand. Northwest Compass, eight thousand. Lifespan, twenty-five thousand. Kenneth Young Center, two-hundred-and-five thousand. Little City, nineteen thousand. Lutheran Social Services, did not submit a request, zero. Uh, Search Inc. was ten days late in their request, zero. Journeys the Road Home, twenty thousand. Gigi's Playhouse did not submit a request, zero dollars. Journey Care, three thousand. Special Leisure Services Foundation, ten thousand. Hands-on, um, is seventy-five hundred. Community Education, three thousand. Wings, three thousand. Center for Enriched Living, fifteen thousand. The new agencies, these six, Arts Refreshing the Soul, one thousand. Cleanup Give Back, seventy-five hundred. Earth Paint, twenty-two thousand. Fellowship Housing Corporation, five thousand. Hopeful Beginnings, five thousand. League of Women Voters, three thousand. Any questions about that? Okay, any suggested changes beyond what I just cited?
So, on this sheet, it says five-eighty-three-five for grant requests, but that's, and over here, it's eight-thirteen-five, but that's partly because the daycare voucher, right?
Yeah, so the eighteen, so the eight-thirteen-five, you would reduce that by two-hundred-and-thirty thousand, that's correct. And that comes out to, I think, five hundred, that was on the old sheet, so five-hundred-and-eighty-three, five hundred.
Okay.
Yep.
Got it.
Yep. So, with that number removed, you, um, let me see here. Then that town, the, the first number I cited on the total found, town fund expenditures would revert back to three million, forty-nine thousand, three-hundred-and-seventy-eight. Yep. So... Okay. All right. Okay, um, any additional, um, questions, proposed changes for the, um, I get my, here's my agenda. Have your agenda handy? Let's place my agenda, oh, I got it, all right. For the, um, Town Fund Social Services and Sewer Division Tentative Budget for twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one? All right. Okay, if I can have a motion to approve the tentative, uh, budget for Town Fund Social Services and Sewer for twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one, with the changes the board has discussed, I would entertain that motion.
So moved.
Moved by Trustee and Graffia. Is there a second?
I second.
Seconded by Trustee Keenly. Um, any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Trustee Saturn?
No.
Trustee Narodowski?
Aye.
Trustee and Graffia?
Aye.
Trustee Keenly?
Aye.
And Supervisor Sweeney.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, thank you. Um, and we'll discuss again on March fourth. Paul will send out an email. We'll requ- uh, we'll invite the new agencies, and then we'll set, set aside some time after to discuss the, the remaining agencies we identified tonight. Under new business, um, there is resolution, uh, item one, Resolution Twenty-Twenty dash O-three, Thirty-second Annual Senior Celebration Day. Can I have a motion to, uh, approve this resolution?
So moved.
Moved by Trustee Saturn.
Seconded.
Seconded by Trustee Narodowski. Any further discussion? Roll call, please. I'm not, I'm sorry, I'll just do a voice vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, okay? All right, you have a proposed annual town meeting agenda in front of you, uh, for April fourteenth, twenty-twenty. Any questions or recommended changes to this agenda? Okay? All right, can I have a motion to approve the annual town meeting agenda as presented?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved by Trustee Narodowski, seconded by Trustee and Graffia. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Notice the address at the top.
I did, yeah.
So... God willing, God willing.
Maybe.
Hope springs eternal.
Mm-hmm. All right.
Oh dear.
Okay, um, let's see here. All right, so you have the, this is, um, the final budget passage for the road and bridge budget, uh, ordinance, uh, twenty-twenty dash O-two R D. Um, I'll hit the high lines, and then if there's any questions, please stop me. Uh, road and bridge, estimated receipts of three-hundred-and-fifty-six thousand. Administration expenditures, ninety-one thousand, five hundred. Employee benefits, one-hundred-and-twenty-two thousand, seven hundred. Uh, road division, uh, contractual services, one-hundred-and-four thousand, five hundred. Uh, equipment division, um, total, total is thirty-two thousand, five hundred. For a total in the road and bridge fund, uh, expenditures of three-hundred-and-fifty-one thousand, two hundred. Estimating ending balance, uh, in March, on March thirty-first, twenty-twenty-one, is six-hundred-and-seventy-one thousand, eight-hundred-and-thirty-seven dollars and ninety-one cents. Any questions? Can I have a motion to approve Resolution Twenty-Twenty dash O-two R D?
So moved.
Moved by Trustee Saturn. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Trustee Narodowski. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Trustee Saturn? Trustee Narodowski?
Aye.
Trustee, uh, Graffia?
Aye.
Trustee Keenly?
Aye.
Supervisor Sweeney.
Aye, motion carries. Um, the next item is the special meeting for March, which we, I forgot was at the bottom of the agenda, but we've already tackled that, so we'll do seven o'clock, uh, six o'clock, we said, six o'clock, on March fourth, um...
You have to do the thirty, the March thirtieth, or whatever that is.
Oh, no, we're talking about March, the March thirtieth as well, right? Yeah, um, but everybody, is everybody okay with March thirtieth, moving that?
We're gonna move the, our regular meeting to, to March thirtieth.
Right, to lay the, to let the tentative town fund budget lay on the table for a full thirty days.
I'll be gone, but that doesn't matter.
What's that?
No, I don't think I'm, I'm not gonna be able to be here.
Okay.
We'll miss you.
Do we have to make a motion and approve that change, no?
Yes.
Okay.
We can, I, that's, that's fine, I mean, we, it doesn't hurt to take it. So, can I have a motion to move the March board meeting, uh, from March twenty-third to March thirtieth?
So moved.
Moved by Trustee and Graffia. Is there a second?
A second.
Seconded by Trustee Keenly. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Did you, did you include this in your report? I thought you wanted to include it in your report, I know. The, um, the Township Day.
I didn't include it in there, so, which you wanted to do.
Okay.
I just sent it to you.
Um, did everyone get a, just a last point, did you, did everyone get the, um, Town Fish, Township Officials of Cook County, the Cook County Township Day?
Yep.
Paper, okay. If, um, you have any questions about that, I'm gonna, I'm gonna get some more details on it, and, and reread that flyer, um, and, and George and I are gonna have a conversation about what his thoughts are, but if any, you have any thoughts about what you'd like to do, please let me know. All right. All right, um, no other matters coming before the board. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Moved by Trustee Saturn, seconded by Trustee Narodowski. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We are adjourned. Thank you.